Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call our study session for September 8th, the orders. Roll call.
Director James Sherman.
Uh huh.
Assistant Secretary Alan Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Newton.
Here.
Director Art Perry.
Here.
President Michael Schaefer.
Here. Scott. Of the comments, this will be timed set aside for those in the audience wishing to make comments on items not listed on the agenda. Seeing only one member of the public, if he probably isn't gonna say anything, we'll hold it on to items. Recycling and Waste Division report, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. President. Javier, do you want to report?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President members of the board. Standard recycling report illustrates the breakdown of the commodities. And the Waste Division report illustrates a total tonnage for August of 2,120. Just to mention on this, the Waste Division report is gonna be modified to include the organics tonnage, because it's currently not illustrated here, so we're gonna modify so the totals match up and you'll be able to, the board will be able to indicate how much organic tonnage. And just to give you a little background, in July 2015, there was 250 tons of organics which were collected. And for August 2015, there was 580 tons, so it doubled. So we're excited to see as it progresses how much more, what the average is gonna be. And we have seen that in the total tonnage as well, it's been true.
Looking here, Javier, the green waste is 15.4%. Normally it was like 30% if I was mistaken. So are we getting less green waste than the regular fraction?
Yes, we are seeing a last decrease, but people are still using their carts. Some questions have come in, what if my organic cart is full, can I use my regular cart as overflow? And we said absolutely, so that's probably some of, usage is still there. Eventually we want everything to go into the organic cart, I think it's gonna be through education.
One last question, if Pennsylvania knows 250 tons, what would our percentage be?
I don't have that one, but yeah.
Well, this is an old waste character, recent report. I mean, this is a standard one, or one. I don't think, Dean, you've not done the new waste character recently since Valier, has been?
We have not, and I believe, and I will, when we talk about it this year, we talked about first of the year, once the organic program was established, well, limit full searches.
My concern is, is just the rest of the city, they're, they're, according to, well, I don't know what, how much the city uses, is there a specific? This is an incorrect characterization of the waste coming in the truck, and so I think this is doing it sooner, I believe it. No, I don't have a clue. I look back at all the old waste characterization reports, you know, 15% is outrageous. As I remember, Valier had one that was, like I said, you know, about 32%. Or the 10 that's been done since I've been on the board, and all the way on the 12, 15%. And Valier had one with 33%.
Yeah, you can do it in a characterization every week and get a different number. The characterization study is quite expensive and time consuming.
Yeah, I know.
And the state really, you know, was just trying to comply with state mandates. And the state does not require us to do that characterization, doesn't even give us a timeframe. So we had thought about waiting until January after the holidays season, and we thought we'd get a pretty good number.
There's no legal right of business to, this, this has to fight the state. But Art's question, isn't Valier one that's the most recent one, really?
Correct. It wasn't really done what Mr. Bailey did. He justified our previous Waste Division report by illustrating and giving more, providing more detail of different routing. Because the old, the first character report didn't just by how the routes were done. Some can argue that old, um, how those cherry pick routes didn't, they don't remember. But we did, we got a snapshot of multifamily, single family, to get them mixed back, so we can get impacted stuff. Well, he backed into our 57% number and he did update some of the recycle percentage commodities. But yeah, so it wasn't a new one, it just reinforced what we've already had. Yeah, and I agree with Mr. Robert Newton that it's better to wait for the next audit so we can get a truer number of what customers events are doing. When other numbers, they're starting to get used in the organic program. So if we do want our announcement to be too soon, everybody participating is just an increase with, as people get familiar with the program.
Isn't that the good rule? I mean, because the organic one, you're gonna be, you're just gonna turn it all green. And for the most part, yeah.
Most part, yes, most part, yes. Javier?
Yes, sir.
I have that question about what percentage. If you figure 250 tons, the newspaper was 220%. That gives us 8% more. That would put us like at 65% this second. Is that correct? Diverged.
Sounds about right.
Then when you get to 500, it'll be close to like 72%. Yeah. Just if they're using these tickets here. We're getting closer. Okay, that's my comment. I kind of agree that doing it after the holidays is probably a better idea. There's still, and I don't know if this is the time, but I'll bring it up anyway, there's still some social media resentment towards us about, you know, people having put that stinky, I mean, there is some of that, and I think as that mellows out, maybe that's not the thing to say, but is that...
The cold weather makes that stinkier.
The cold weather makes that stinkier. I think as that attitude changes, and I don't think it's a huge amount of people that are, and I don't know if you guys are getting calls about stinky cans and stuff, but I think that'll just sort of mellow out, people will realize the benefit of it and then will use it. So I think waiting is probably better.
Oh, okay, next month they're gonna have the behavioral studies from town. Give an update on that. So, you know, 600 people, you know, is doing that surveying. So that's a good, that's a good statistical number to validate, you know, what people are thinking about the program, or is it smelling, is it simple, you know? I think that results of that survey is gonna help us a lot.
Well, in this group, these folks that are on the social media side of it that are taking us to task, are gonna take us to task if we gave them a gold bar, you know, so. Fortunately, not a whole lot of people read it, but we get those little bleeps on your phone.
You know, I'm not having any trouble. I put it in that little bucket, and then every night I take it out and wash out the bucket.
Yeah, they're talking about that. That's trash.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I just put it in the bucket.
Some of them are even complaining about not, non-food waste and what a pain in, you know, how could they shove this down our throat, you know?
In the bottom line, if they don't have you, they don't want it.
And that's, that's the...
If they're also upset, everything just go the old way.
That's the easiest response, is say, hey, you know, Ed won't be knocking on your door, so go ahead and not use it. That's what I tell them.
Javier, I'd like to ask one more question based on the last, but the reason the tonnage was down here is because of, this is an old waste characterization report, it doesn't reflect that. So if the tonnage was more, it'd be 15% of the, of this, 580, rather than 580, as in, going from 57 to 54, I can't remember.
Well, I was just thinking, only 250 tons that they did, and then last month, then 500 tons this month, they had to look at percentage of other ends, so that's why it's usually finished.
Well, I think if it's 580 tons, it's just 15% of that's what we're doing.
Well, you have to use the 15% ratio.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's what they would do if they were still in the mixed waste can.
I was looking at total tonnage.
Oh, here.
Lizard's on the boar eye.
But their food's not included, right? You gotta factor in food, because food is not included.
Yeah, yeah, we'll look at it.
I'm the type of wife who's a hater, you know, in January, the overall organic, actually it's kind of like, it's down. Okay, let's move on to the code enforcement report. Excuse me, code enforcement officer report. Let me say that right. There it is.
Good morning, Mr. President members of the board. This code enforcement officer is reporting seven scavenging investigations for the month, seven without incident, provides notices of each contact. I omitted one because it wasn't a contact, I was in the area of Fuchsia and Begonia, and I got information from a resident that folks are coming in pickup trucks out of Santa Ana and rolling southbound down Fuchsia into the residential tract in order to scavenge. And it sounds like it's more of a commercial operation, pickup truck, you know, dumping the ton, big ones. So I sat on the area and for a couple days, and I saw a vehicle, and I had what we like to call a failure to yield. And hey, because I talked to him, zoomed off, so I wasn't able to get a license plate, but I'm working the area now, seeing if I can get a plate. And I already talked to Seadro, our former officer here, see if I can get a unit out there, that'd be a traffic stop, so I can get the person identified and probably cite them if we catch him with anything.
Biggest good part, you're a little code enforcement officer.
Yeah. Every once in a while, being wanted to hit the car.
You can trade your life, yeah.
I can trade my life.
But I had to show some restraint. So I'll be eager to report to the board once I get that, have that person identified and cited, because I think we'll have zero tolerance for those folks, especially in lieu of the behavior of the youth on that day. Secondly, 59 cases of trash container violations, just folks leaving carts in public view. I noted Albert Place, you'll see, it's the second line down, there's eight, and it's kind of an unusual occurrence to the block's wider attention. We found a concentration of the green trash carts accumulated in the middle of the street with no, you couldn't attach to any property. Reason being, you know, these carts probably came from the surrounding street, I think.
And with the new organic?
And green trash carts.
Could it have been an act of civil disobedience?
I believe so.
People protesting, getting them, put them in the middle of the street.
Well, it was an interesting scenario. You know, contacted the residents, the neighbors, and it's funny, the folks who have their, the trash carts on curbside in front of their homes, they all had their green trash carts. So it wasn't, I don't know what the reason was to leave them there, but I think one turned into two, which ultimately turned into eight.
Eight.
It was a unique situation, yeah. So it was dealt with immediately, and we're keeping an eye out. It's gonna be hard to track down whom they correspond to, because you don't know if the person's bringing the trash cart out to curbside or not. But I'll keep an eye out, and I have a good rapport with the residents that are in Albert Place now, so.
It's a quaint little, quaint little place.
Yeah.
Were they all empty or?
Yeah, they were by a fire hydrant and all that. So overall, 59, just a proliferation of that, and I've seen pretty good use of the trash carts, that's my observation, the green carts, I see folks wheeling them out constantly, so I think it's gonna be as good viable as it has been.
Were all those in the street empty?
They were.
Did you all look at the line?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That was dealt with when we became aware of it, but it was a unique situation. And that's about it, nothing else I've noticed to report.
Yeah. Good questions? Good job, Ed, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I have my notes on it. Art, I'm sure you're up next, will you add?
Well, just a brief report. Harlan and I have met like three or four times with Scott, about three times. And we still have one more book to go through before we make the final report. We have copies of the NIMs and the suggestions in there, but we won't present those until we have study session. And we'll probably, well, wait, this month is pretty hectic, so we'll probably wait till next month to meet Harlan and then we'll meet with Scott, and it'll be fine.
Yeah, and it's really good that we're going through, because the needs can have life changes, and you know, the need to know, that's really, that's good.
Good. Any questions? Okay. Project 310, the Indus Pipeline. Rob, you're up.
Thank you.
Nope.
So on both projects today, I brought an exhibit to review, and...
Do you want to get your camera to pick it up?
That'd be great. So let me, can you hold that just for one sec?
Bob and I finally found our calling.
Turn it on, turn it on.
I'm Bama.
Yeah.
What is, what's your name?
Paulie Mitchell.
No, I'm gonna need to, excuse me, I can, like it's in here. So basically, and you can't see that there, you're watching the move up, but this is a quick exhibit, this is part of the plans, this is the Indus lining and manhole lining project that we have still here, and we're gonna mitigate that problem by lining the line and cutting roots out of manholes and lining the manholes also. So just to explain where we are, this is Indus Street right here, this is the 73 freeway and Bristol Street southbound, the Ayers Hotel is right here, Santa Ana Avenue is right here, so Santa Ana and Bristol southbound, this is the Auto Flex, and Ayers Hotel right there, there's cell stations, 7-Eleven and all that. So our line comes down Santa Ana Avenue, and it cuts right through this development right here. And this is the manhole where we had the SSO from. It came out of this manhole, the blockage was 300 feet from here, and it came out of that manhole, and it went into a drain right here, and it went right in the channel. So 8,100 gallons New Year's Day, and we got part of our fine because of that. So what we're going to do is, we're going to line the line, which means we'll cut all the roots out first, and then we'll use a cured-in-place pipe, C-I-P-P, cured-in-place pipe. And the real challenge here is the location of the manholes. I believe Scott during the strategic plan or one of his other presentations showed some pictures of how these manholes are in these backyards. Our sewer goes on a straight line inside a 35-foot curving easement that is adjacent to the Santa Ana Valley flood control channel. So in order to access these manholes, we're going to have to get in the flood control channel with a crane truck. And access will be up here at Santa Ana Avenue, you actually drive that way, turn around and go under that bridge, and then you can drive on this side of, that's the little ditch in the concrete, so the low-flow water all stays in one spot. This is one side, this is the other side of the channel. So we're going to have cranes, lift up equipment, and put it in the backyards, and we'll probably line from down here as far as we can, hopefully 600 feet at one shot, and then we'll get back in here, last one in here, and we'll line another 600 feet from there, and that should get us to hold 1,200 feet. And the manholes, way back when, we had our boys do a confined space entry into manholes, they are confined spaces, with sawzalls, which are horrible saws, to cut out roots that were pretty much that thick going through the rings of our manhole. So that has to be cut out by hand, pulled out of the manhole, and then we're using a one-piece, it's actually a cured-in-place manhole liner, and it will be let in through the top and pushed out against the sides, and it is called polytriflex. It is, it's a phenomenal compound that will last almost forever. So once we get in and do all this work, it should be solved forever, so there won't be any more roots, no reason to get back in here, et cetera, et cetera. So this down here, this is as we know, the Newport Beach golf course, and we drive down Irvine Avenue, we go in, it used to be trade wind, now it's some other kind of winds, and we drive to the fence, and then we build, we built this access road many moons ago that gets us right to these manholes right there. So this is, that's the scope of work, and that's the project. We are in design, we do have to obviously have permission from the flood control district to be in there, and they're going to determine time of the year, working hours, and those kinds of things. But it will take cooperation from our, all our residents, and we do have to bypass flows. We're going to bypass flows on Santa Ana, so that the only thing in here will be from them and some of the laterals here, and actually these laterals here, these are actually served off of up here. So it'll be a large coordination effort, but we were smart, and we had SanCon do a preliminary feasibility study, and they did a lot of legwork, and we went with them. And we also have met with them again, so we understand all the parameters, and it can be done, it's not gonna be easy, and there may not even be a lot of bidders on this, because as you can see, those districts are very tough. A very large truck won't be able to get down in here, and we've measured the access, the width of the road, the height of the road, and et cetera, et cetera. There is a little access road up here that comes down this side, and that's this road right there, which is too high above the channel, it's too far away to have a crane here and reach all the way over there, and this side of it, that road along that side of the channel really doesn't help us any. So we're planning on entering this complex here and coming in here, or right in here. So we'll be here, we'll have trucks and manpower at the bottom of the channel being craned over into backyards as we need it, and we can drive down here, and we'll be staging down here as well. There actually is a little path that is behind the channel wall. It's very small down here, but there is a man-sized path that is a little wider, I think you can see it right there, and that will all use that as well. So that's a quick overview.
Didn't we have to do a new IR?
No.
No?
The reason we don't is, there's exceptions in C-LO for rehabilitating and reconstructing and taking care of existing facilities. So we're very fortunate that we enjoy a categorical exemption. So most of our projects now are rehabbing, replacing, not a new finishing project. There are different exceptions for those, but that's why we don't, so we're very fortunate.
One more.
I hope so. All questions are good questions.
Estimating the time wise, would you see the...
Well, the work itself will take three or four weeks, but I don't think we're gonna be able to get in there before the rainy season would technically start October 1st. So here we are, you know, middle of September, and we're not ready to start construction, we haven't even finished the plans at spec. So I have a feeling they may push us way out. There is not hardly any rain between now and December, but we have made initial contact with them, and they are contemplating access and working hours for us, and we're gonna have to do some homemaking.
You had that on a six-month cleaning schedule, have you moved it, have you changed that?
Yes, it's done every, it's done every, you know, three times, it's done three times a year now, seven times a year.
It's hard to find these, truly, still, yeah.
Yes, they are, they are, it's a continued problem.
Yeah, yeah. And how many residents have the manholes in that section?
Well, there's, these green dots are the manholes, so you can see how many of them. However, we might be able to, we're planning on, Plan A is to line, like for instance, through this manhole, that one, that one, maybe all the way up to here, if not here. So Plan A is to shoot through a manhole with a liner, and unfortunately, going this way is uphill. Gravity helps when you line, so we like to line from the upstream. There's no way to get all the equipment we need either in that backyard or in that backyard. So Plan A is to line as far as we can that way. Plan B is shorter sections with the lining truck down in the channel, hosed over the top and down into the manhole. So that's Plan B.
Are we doing that bottom section first or the top section?
Probably the bottom, to see how far we can get, because that's the hardest piece, so we start with that. So it is feasible, it's not easy, but it was a good suggestion to do this. Right now, we have that smart cover in the manhole right here. So that, that manhole tells us, we have a, like a sensor on the underside of manhole with little sonar that looks at the water level, so if the water level gets up, we get an early signal rather than having to come out in the manhole cover.
What are we doing? Public relations wise, keeping the residents updated, are we communicating with them often?
We have, yes, we have written a letter to them about, we've been crawling in some backyards lately, looking at things, so we've given them notice that we're doing an inspection and that there's a project coming up. So we're really going to start giving more VR when we have a timeframe on the flood consultant.
Was that light put in before this was developed?
It was put in just before, yeah, when this whole thing was developed, it was put in for these homes. So when, as you can see, it kind of had to do the line before they did the homes, because they're, they're all over it.
That 801671 Indus Street.
That's right.
With my swimming pool right above the sewer, huh?
Right. So, yes, this is, Art's County Sanitation, it's, it's, I'm sure, Jim and Director Newton...
Is it part of this project?
Well, no, not this one, but they have, they have similar, they have major struggles where, like the Red Hill Bee's are lined, people just went right over the top of it without any regard to the easement and pools and the works.
So we had to seal it up a little?
Right.
Do we have to put stuff in there?
Well, four or five minutes.
Rob?
Yes?
Has that been checked lately, I mean, has anybody developed anything lately?
No, not, not, not over the manholes, we've been able to recover all the manholes. We did enter into a agreement with this gentleman, but he never went forward with any of his removable dac over the sewer line. And even if it was a removable dac, we're not planning on being in his backyard, we're gonna line right through that piece, so.
What kind of formal notice do you need to give them?
Well, what, not a whole lot, meaning that we have an easement, and we have, it's our sewer, so it is a project. We do always communicate, and we have standard flyers for any kind of project. So as President Schaefer said, that's very important. A part of this project is to liaison with the people. So as soon as we get our timing down, we're gonna lay out all the timing and tell them when we're gonna be there. So then I'll know a lot more myself, and we'll go from there.
Red, red rust, it seems a lot of steam coming out of the manhole.
Yes.
That is so close to the house.
Yeah, we're either gonna be in this manhole big time or this one, depending on how far we get up.
It's in the street, it's, it's steam in it, it's that piping.
Yeah, if worse comes to worse, and we can't go uphill like that, we're gonna have to pull that liner through one section at a time, that'll be worse.
Will they have to shut off the load of their homes when it's going on?
Once that liner goes through, they will. You can line... You can line in a little bit of water, but it's not advisable, so we try to bypass everything. But, once that liner goes through, until it is cured and lateral cut out, it's not right. It would just not add up. So, uh, we do plenty of lining projects all the time and I've never come back here and says that we had somebody who had a problem with kind of part of it. Alright, that's one project, I have another one, and I'll leave that up here if you'd like to pick up more questions.
So, likely it'll go in this frame.
Right. So, while we had one PR project, this one's another, this is almost the PR nightmare. So, this is, we call this the Harbor force main. And this is, this is, uh, this is the intersection of Harbor and Wilson. And this is our Harbor pump station right there. So, right now, that line, and that line right now, it pumps to the alignment in black. So, it goes like this, and we have one leg that goes into that manhole. And then there's a valve and it, it used to go that way to that manhole. And we have no existing plans on this, none. We just know it's there. We don't know exactly where it is, we don't know how deep it is, the condition of the pipe. And we have been studying using the electronic analysis. You can't go around a ninety-degree bend. If we were going this manhole, we'd get stuck right there. If we go in this manhole, we could go to here. But, we'd have to pull that thing through and to bypass this station at, during the day, would take nine five-thousand gallon tanker trucks. Okay? So, we would effectively be all over the place here. And that would be a, a major event. So, we thought about, we've met with PICA a number of times. And they do not yet have a method to assess a force main without, with a free swimming pool coming from the upstream manhole and going down the line. We would have to shut the station down, empty the line, put the tool in there. Well, the minute you shut the station down and empty the line, now we're, middle of the night, now we're like five or six, five-thousand gallon tanker trucks. So, we went through every scenario about digging a hole here and putting in two forty-fives. You can't go through valves with that tool, so, or at least they don't want you to. And these valves are way out in the middle here. So, even an attempt to analyze the line would really only work from here to here and from here to here, but that would only be that if we could run the jetter hose, shut down the station, run the jetter hose with the rope attached to it all the way down there and start taking valves apart again. So, that is so expensive and so time-consuming that, and, and because that line is, we have no plans on that, we're just going with the fact that this line was built in the fifties. It is seventy years old, it does need a new line, so we're gonna put a new line in. And we're worried about trying to rehab this thing later. Meaning, we won't destroy it or abandon it, like filling it full of slurry. We'll leave it there as a possible use later on.
Which one is it?
The black one. The new one will be in red. The new line will be, we will catch it right there and we're gonna open cut to here. Then this will be a twelve-foot by forty-foot. We're gonna call it a boring pit. We're not tunneling, we're boring. Micro tunneling is a different operation, we're really jacked and bored. So, it's more boring. So, this is the boring pit, right there. So, we'll open cut from there to there. And there's the receiving pit right there, ten by ten receiving pit. So, we'll drill from there to there, dig down, catch it right there and tie it into the manhole. We are considering trying to put two lines in that sleeve that we would put the first line in. It's an eight-inch pipe, but I don't know if we have enough room to increase the diameter of the sleeve from eighteen inches to twenty-four or larger and put two new lines in there. Kind of the parallel force main concept. So, we, we are, we could dig from, we could dig a pit back there and bore all the way in there, but that's just that much more expense. So, this'll be open cut and it'll be open cut there. So, this area right here will not be open cut. So, as you can see, this is a nightmare on Elm Street, no matter how you slice it. This is night work. It takes a significant amount of time to even put the traffic control up. Meaning, almost two hours just to get the traffic control in place. And that means two hours almost to take it down. So, how much time do we have to work in the middle of the night? Not much. So, uh, the city knows we're up to this. We are confirming the utilities right around the areas of the, the two pits we're going to do. And we have decided on the alignment, we have decided on the elevation, which is, by the way, threading the needle. And that, you know, this, this is major, not sweep at night, other than the fact that we know that we have a line in at a certain elevation in a sleeve. So, we're gonna do that right next to it because it's only a foot or two above a storm drain and two feet below a sewer. So, we are knifing right through and it's gonna be tight. So, but we did it before when we installed that black line, uh, from here to here. We, we bored that through, so we'll bore that one through. And talk about, have you noticed your residents and the city? Well, I don't, no matter how you slice it, we're not gonna look good here. No matter how much notice we give everybody, whatever, there's just no way around it. If we were to try drilling, not, well, let's say tunneling, we're, we're gonna be boring from here. If we were back here and we're going to try to do micro tunneling, the length of the pit has to be so long and the tu, and the pipe has to be strung out for so long, we don't have that amount of room to be able to have all that pipe sitting above ground. And like for instance, when we did, when we put in seven hundred feet of pipe bursting on Bristol Street, we had seven hundred feet of pipe laid out, fused together, and that, that was gonna be pulled in. So, we don't have that ability to put length of pipe out here and then pull it back in. So, this pit is big enough that sections of pipe will be put in the pit and all the work will be done in here and will be fused together either above the pit or in the pit, but it'll be attached as it goes in. So, from a, the boring part is not hard at all. All the boring guys know is, give me a pit here, give me a pit there, I'll bore it right straight, no problem. Well, the, the boring is just, the boring will take less than a week. It's, it's the open cut from here to here and then the tie-in here and the tie-in there. So, it's really three to four weeks' worth of work. But, with working hours being probably reduced, we, we have to work with the city on that. And the fact that, at one time, even though that's our current outlet manhole, we were thinking of moving this way down here so that we wouldn't be in the intersection. Because as you can see, that pit right there, there's your downturn line right there. There's a straight through line, it's been doing that.
Does the city's new concrete medium affect us at all?
Uh, almost, very good question. This is lit right there.
Right there, it's short to the side of the street.
Uh-huh. Yeah, we have, there's one of our manholes right there and we are right next to it right there.
What happened to the plans on the old line, the black line?
No, they were never, they, they were ne, never part of the district. I actually used to work for Don Stevens, the engineer part of me. There was no, no profile drawings or anything, just showing on a plan here. And that was the problem. So, I mean, even if, you know, plans are, you hope they build exactly for the plan, but you don't even know that. So, forty-five, all of this was, it is what it is. But, now you try to come back and use this expensive tool that does electronic analysis of the pipe. And you would've never known when you put this ninety-degree in that now you can't do that. So, and you have these two valves here too. So, one of the alternatives we looked at was putting our first pit right there, fixing up those valves, opening all that up and opening that up, and then doing the electronic inspections. But, we're inspecting a line that's seventy years old. Even if it's in good shape, are you gonna leave it there another seventy? Probably not. So, let's get our new line in, like, like what we did at Mendoza, we put a new line in and we left the existing one there. When we have time and we have money, we'll go back, inspect it, test it, rehab it. Now, we have two lines. But, for the meantime, at least get a new line in service, buy another seventy.
You're working staff on the traffic department?
No, really everyone at the city, meaning, an engineering, yeah, city engineer on down. We've had a number of meetings. And the city did two things without, uh, without telling us. They repaved up to here this way. So, we have that extra paving requirement to worry about here. And the extra paving requirement to worry about, this is the crosswalk. Just on that side of the crosswalk, we'll have to do fifty-eight that way. So, it's a devil one way or the other.
Sure looks to know why they did that. I mean, straight, straight makes sense.
Right.
But, that just, there must've been something when they were doing that that made them...
Right, might be hard to see, but it clearly is spaghetti underground. There are lines in every direction.
Or we didn't do it.
No.
Hopefully not.
That's what's happening, there's still kinda stuff.
So, are, are we contacting the water department and make the noise?
We've, uh, yes.
With the water and all the streets, have we...
We've already contacted everyone twice.
You could gas and everything, it's something.
As, as Scott knows, these, these other utilities are really not as, it's disappointing how unfriendly they are. You basically have to buy their adage. You have to buy them and send them a check before they'll help you. You use a USA or you send them a notice. If you send them a notice that says, "We're gonna be in here, can you send us the plans?" They just send you back a note that says, "Yeah, we're in there, thank you." That's all they do. Then you go to them and you say, "I want this, 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 and this made," write up an invoice and...
Are, are those plans in the capital county?
No, each utility has to, so. And, and, and just so you know, the gas company's out at Irvine, I think Scott told you, they installed the meter, they put the wrong size, something in regulator, they're gonna fix that. Well, gas companies surface here too. The gas company is putting in a new line. Do they send notice to us? No. That, all they do is they draw their own plans by hand, call up USA and say, "Here's where we're putting it." And they wanted to put their new gas line right here, crossing our line and being right next to that. And I said, "You can't do that because we don't have plans on that line." Nine tanker trucks, no, you're not gonna do that, it's crazy. So, they said, "Okay, we'll move it." I said, "We want it," because this is the center line of the street, that line right there. They go, "Well, we'll move it to the, we'll move it north, we'll put it on the street's center line." I said, "No, you won't. You are not gonna put it here where our line is." Because we don't have the confidence to mark it in green paint within the actual limits of where it's supposed to be. So, we told them, "You gotta be over here." And they're doing that now, but we had to pound on this table basically.
What do you want to do?
It's gonna go somewhere down here and it's gonna go into the intersection and connect to an existing line. It's in here, so.
And it's happening in the same time as that?
No, they're out there now. And, you know, they're under construction and we're telling them, "No, you're moving their lines." So, this is not easy, it's very delicate. This is like, in this, it's, it's the same thing in backyard, this is the same thing but in the street. Just, just logistics, it's not easy. So, we need the new line, we have to do it, it's not gonna be easy. So, there we go.
What is your schedule?
Well, uh, we're, we're not that far from having a plan and saying, "Ready to go on." And we're just fine-tuning them. We've, we've had this board, this receiving pit, we've had it here, we've had it here, we had it way down there. But, then there's the concrete for the bus stop, so we had it here. Then we try to stay away from the median. So, we've looked at every alternative. Uh, this is the best one for us, less, at least amount of force main. So, we have, we're not so worried about the rainy season because there's no real rain until really after December, however, hell, we know coming in. So, we'd like to do it before the end of the year, so, so we're...
So, how long is the bidding?
The, the, when we got to bid, it's, yeah, for, for four weeks. We, that's normally what we do. We did projects, we put them out to bid for four weeks, it's usually, I don't know.
Rob, what's the construction cost?
Well, it, uh, the, we had one that was up to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand because we were way down here. And then when we decided to move this here and even open cut this area, we were down around four-something. So, we have like eight and a half in the, in the budget. So, I think the boring here was less than, right around three-hundred. So, we could be in and out of here for five or six hundred and out of eight hundred. So, we might do very well budget-wise.
So, you're, you mean five hundred is probably like the budget?
Probably.
Is that medium might be in there or is that...
This here? That's in. They just finished it.
The big yellow bumps.
So...
That's on Wilson Street.
Wilson, right, Russell, with Starbucks and the oil.
Right.
I knew, I, once it's a Starbucks, I knew it's a lot.
Right, and they redid all of the, when they built that, they redid all of that. Alright, so, a little touch of this. If you'd like, if we can leave these here for a little bit?
Yeah. Put the water consultants out.
We'll just put them right here.
We'll probably put a water major out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that takes us to your study session items. Go for it.
Yeah, okay. I wrote them all down here. Uh, first of all, to keep up with your organic challenge, I mean, if I can, I can stay on there.
We actually have a, uh, organics meeting tomorrow, but for Ootin and I, so we'll be able to provide that. So, we'll be able to provide that. And we'll give that report to the board.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause we, if, if there wasn't no, typically, we usually have an organics meeting before the study session. But typically, we have one. So, we schedule for, for tomorrow, and then, um, the director will report out.
Okay. And that, because we have to, we're going to take the burden. Uh, the next one is, uh, and the next one is for Beach, the Lins Brothers sisters. I think they hear what's going on on that. I think it's been a history for us, very interesting. And then the next one, um, is, um, a couple things on the pipeline that's, uh, stopped us everywhere we're at next month, just to find out, you know, where we're going with the mandate. That's the, uh, man, Hayes, who has been working with us after. And then the last one, uh, is a procedure, a protocol for our board. In other words, Lynn, um, the newspaper colleague, we used to say, you know, "Who, who's in command, what's going on?" And none of us else would try to talk because we could be picked off, and we could all say something different. And I think it's important that we try to enjoy, because we agree on things. Whatever topic.
Guy agree.
So, anyway, we just need protocol on that.
I know.
Okay.
And then Brad, Brad, Brad's in.
Brad knows to call him first.
That was good.
Good idea.
Well, see, we used to, we used to say, just the manager or president. We need to get this straight, what we're doing, because they could be maybe picked off and change the decision.
Might give the information to the customer.
Well, but we don't know that.
We'll get, we'll read it in the paper.
What, what we used to do, it's, no, that's fine. No, what we used to do with regard to those is we, if we had a sense of something, we used to make a, this was bullet points that were talking to us. So, as an alternative, we have an interesting speed, uh, all the points to repeat, uh, one piece. And everyone has that, so...
And I typically won't until I talk to Scott. Scott and I have been pretty good about the same with, recently with the board, or the building and stuff.
Yeah, and whenever I get contact from the meeting house, you know, once I got pulled, I used to be out there saying, "Do you have documents coming out?"
But it's, it's where we ignore them. And then that should be something probably you guys have in your, at our committee, is some, something about effective, if there needs to be a procedure.
I think, I think that's the thing that we should do is, uh, have a study fit and agenda item on what the policies are.
Oh, we will be, we, we'll, we'll get down with what we're doing.
Ours is a little different, because we're double checking to make sure, except today. Yours is...
My concern is, what is the existing policy? I mean, who speaks for the board and all this?
If it's Scott, I'm looking at it. Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it. We haven't come across it yet.
We have a session before.
I think, I remember Marco, on the board. But I don't know if it's in...
Yeah. Oh, we may wanna say it again.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I agree.
I was designated to speak as president when we got our...
Well, you, you've got better background than you have. You do research thoroughly, you know, with a bunch of people for trash and...
Okay, the only other thing, uh, if this isn't the time act of what, uh, is the, uh, Coast Guard State Department, Michigan, 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 are we donating anything, Mark?
That's your question.
It's, uh, October first.
No, I haven't done any. Normally, they send me, they ask me personally if I wanna donate through my business. I haven't seen anything on it.
We haven't, we haven't done that in our house.
I know we haven't, but others do. And, you know, I, I still look and go, "Oh, God, really? I mean, I was just, I'm doing this, and I'm following..."
They're conscious.
Okay, well, then, you know, I just, here, and this, this honor is the greatest and dying of pleasure.
Do we wanna put that on agenda for the board meeting, for the session? If you have time, and maybe we saw something we didn't want to talk about. Visit study sessions, we do that, for physical purposes. You know, to make this, something more... Did you see what Scott...
That's a barbecue ring, it's in the paragraph.
Yeah, just a barbecue, the paragraph, and...
We've been there. We get, we all get in fights.
But I don't think, I don't think that the history has ever, they just never sponsored, or they never asked us to sponsor.
You know, they send, they have, they have, yeah, they have categories. Like nine-one-one sponsors, fifty dollars, recognition and reservations for one guest. Engine companies sponsor a hundred dollars, recognition, resident, uh, reservations for two guests. Gold Shield sponsors, two hundred and fifty dollars, recognition and reservations for up to four guests. And we have first responses, at least five or ten sponsors, five hundred dollars, recognition, reservations for up to six guests. Local on banner. And the middle, and the last one is a middle, middle of honor sponsor, a thousand dollars. And that's recognition reservations for up to ten guests and local...
There's a deadline for next week, for October the first.
Yeah. There's a deadline.
I, I, I think the past, you, you, um, will we end up with lots of it for, because we were, you have to, to give them what's, what's, how's that move our purpose? So, we, if we give a thousand dollars, whatever, how's that move our purpose, you know, our...
We have to have a group or something.
Yeah, similar, or, or...
It's similar to the concept of promoting.
Right.
What's public safety, recognition, so we're doing that stuff?
We have to see when, how, then, but, maybe Scott should look at that and see if it's viable.
But do we put on the board agenda?
Yes. I think Alan, Alan needs to, I think Alan should see that, see where...
Yeah. Which we're gonna do, I'm sure.
He made out a form or something.
And the other thing is, don't forget about the breakfast, Chango breakfast, which is September seventeenth. It's just, you know, this guy, I think, um, Heather, she's taught Sunday. That's, you know, thinking, the industry success. But anyway, I didn't know how many I wanted to go to, I don't know. I was there, I was calling, I was hopping, so...
Good for you, thanks for representing me.
I know.
I've got one page at...
September seventeenth?
I had all this saved. Pretty soon, Pierce, Longcome, and Plissworth, and it says, "Are you lost it with my husband?"
I'd like to see if Dean could attend the next study session to talk about the transfer station in Newport Beach. How we could become part of that. We talked earlier, but it wasn't on our agenda, so we think we'll talk about that. But... Um, with the agenda of the meeting, I've given Scott, and I think he mentioned it in his Friday update, and you're probably gonna think I'm crazy, but, um, I had brought up the idea of, "Is she trying to town these electric boxes, utility boxes with the decorations on it, or what they're called?" Wraps, yeah. So, I asked Scott to take a look at whether we could do some of our pump station doors. The community is really responding very, you know what I'm, basically what I'm talking about?
There's one right there on, on Central and...
But I wouldn't put, like, some net, I, I think if we're gonna do it, we should have some tie-in to either organics or, or some way that people can identify that with us.
The reason to me, on, on Friday, I was gonna ask, you know, city, what's something you, you know, go from there? And if you bring it back to the board and...
Yeah, what, what's our agenda items for the, I saw you have two or three, three or four items.
Yeah, yeah, with some, um, tubular water bill, um, something like that. You'll remind them, um, the city about the deadline again, for deadline order for organic. Um, then the wraps. That's pretty good. Um, and then, um, um, organic, no, that's not it. Water bill, um, oh, utility notice for banning, the banning channel bike way. They're, they're being designed, the bike way on Tyler Park, and so we wanna manage that. What we have, what we're doing with that, with the, with the, uh, commercial organic recycling. Oh, then I had one on polluteness, and this was just to share information with them. Um, I had a, I received, uh, you know, a webinar, um, and it's, the topic is, um, successful improvement, real world pollution to reduce polluteness. So, but, you know, we've got, we've got big problems over here, so I'll just do that for you. And also, um, City of San Francisco, I found a, a story, and, uh, City of San Francisco, what they're doing with the future, not emergency, kind of a call for home, so it's just, kind of a big, other than that. And then, uh, the wraps, yeah. We, we still value that.
Have you seen that topic?
No.
You, a lot of stuff, I mean, can you get that? I don't wanna be blindsided with anything from that, just like the rest of them, I'm very bad. There could be some things that they want us to talk about.
Is anyone in?
I, I can't, I can't, I can't, my life is going to be...
For clarification, um, President of the Board, uh, next month, the board director meeting, we talked about this, um, earlier, but inviting Carolyn Emery, Lacco, to speak to the board regarding the grand jury's report on Lacco. Um, I think I need your copy of their, their draft response. Do you still want her to come this month?
Um, just so that everybody knows, it is Doc, we talked about having her as, as, you want, a program like the October twenty-second is Doc quarterly meeting, so you're within about a week of... So, I, I think we can get that same material, I'd be...
By your fourth session, I think.
I, I, that's all I have, I have to report.
Did, did you send it to me there or not?
I think it was about, I think there was a link to their, uh, you, you don't get access to it recently, but it's, um, I think they're speaking on it, maybe tomorrow or not.
I want you to know I read the whole thing, it's a six page one.
I got started, I'm gonna tell it soon.
So, I'll call Carolyn back, 'cause, um, we'll, we'll count them.
After hearing her at the, at the, it's Doc meeting, maybe we'll follow up.
Are you firm up with your stuff?
Yeah.
Plus, CSBA is still in contact with Carolyn, working with the, how many people?
Is our, is our next board meeting seventeen, yes, six? Five, thirty? This, this next three.
Yeah, that's certain. Yeah, but I think, we may start this discussion through organic meeting. We're starting to get a lot of data on, on the organic program and with the drought. That, that's impacting, probably impacting the amount of, again, pollution. And I think we also ought to begin to think, saying that if the drought continues, um, you know, taking through how we're gonna meet the, the seventy-five percent removal rate. The, the gases are a large portion of that. I think, so maybe we can begin to discuss that through organic meeting. But then I think it should be a piece of study, I think, that, in fact, the grass, too, is not what we have changed. And then, and I take further review of this, uh, and what we're talking about, at least for mine.
There's a preparation study.
Yeah, the, um, what's the waste authorization, and... It's not what it used to be, and it never would be, because it's, you know, a little glimpse of something out of one drought, or multiple droughts. We need to legally find, um, what offending impacts, how people's drought has, and, and other things, as we begin to collect it towards going.
Could go the other direction, maybe drought may be a, maybe a more...
Did Alan, uh, uh, verify?
Yeah.
Was it out of the works on that, that day then? What?
Yeah.
You mean with the dunes?
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't find, they didn't find the lord.
It was on the tree.
That could've been massive.
I just do not understand, uh, you can advertise swimming in impaired water, and that's what they're doing. That's a, that day is, we found a three oh three deep in here. They advertise swimming, so I just can't understand how could they do that? I mean, wouldn't you think that somebody who got sick would say, "Why am I swimming in here?"
Some incense never leaves, but...
Actually, we never got fined, I didn't think, or even, we emerged to, really, when I was there. I didn't, I think, in Nebraska, because we could know the difference, because, um, we closed the beach with one time, um, period here, and none of the restaurants. And they were all screaming. It was like, we can't all...
We did not get fined.
We did not get fined.
I don't know why.
You know, I, I met, had a lot of lunches, half a dream, and...
Maybe you spent enough at all those restaurants that they didn't need to find the...
Well, that was my goal.
Yeah, sure.
All right, Doc, under oral communications and director comments, um, I, when I came in, this was two letters from SDRMA. Um, I don't, you were copied on these letters? I'm gonna give you twelve. Um, first one, they're both dated August twelfth, from David Aranda, the president of the SDRMA board. First one says, "Regarding no paid property claim, liability claims in twenty fourteen fifteen, congratulating us on our efforts on no claims, no property liability claims for the calendar year fourteen fifteen, uh, which reduces our contribution, provides us some credit incentive points." So, so that was the first letter. The second one, "There's no paid workers' compensation claims in fourteen fifteen, which again reduces our contribution to SDRMA." So, uh, these are congratulations to staff for hard work and diligence, and keeping claims out of the, even though I tried to get us to do a claim, they couldn't, wouldn't do it. But, uh, congratulations, Scott, to the staff. I love you, I love your job.
You should announce again, tell everybody about the chapter.
Oh, yeah, just, uh, thank you, Arlene. The, uh, we were notified that ISDoc will be receiving the chapter of the year award at the CSBA conference. So, I'll be accepting on behalf of ISDoc, and accepting our award, and that's very, very good.
The chapter, what I'm really excited about, because I mean, we're up against three other chapters.
That's so, um, that, yeah, yeah.
But the travel ring must've been made for the CSBA.
I believe so, yeah. I'll have to go over that.
What's your, Jim and I are from.
Oh, I, I don't know. I, I don't think I've met me.
Probably been here, it's probably not.
Yeah. That's why I'm wondering.
And you're not going with me. We're gonna go, leave around ten o'clock, Bob, so...
On Monday?
We're leaving on Monday and going to San Jose, and we're gonna rent a car. And then we're gonna come back on Thursday morning. That's our, our schedule.
Monday, well, that's what, what it is now. I may have to hold her, but we've been, you know, coming back by the day or so.
We're going early.
But I, I, I'm not for sure yet.
Give them a minute, 'cause I would be, that, asking to do that too. We just can't, can't we do that with a change of, Southwest, huh? Eagle and Southwest? Yeah, they change it. Okay.
I could check this one on.
I'll have more.
Is she gonna come in tomorrow? She's getting ready for that. No, she, you're not staying in my hotel room either, so...
I don't take up much space.
You have a my wife, I'm gonna sleep with her. You did, you did right. We'll get cars to San Jose, if you leave with us at the San Jose.
I might need a car tonight.
You have a place in the casino? We'll put you down as the main driver.
Mine looks to see all.
We can put all our names down as the drivers. I just can't find Napa.
Let me talk to her, and then...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that'd be great.
I forget. I, I've got a bill from Savannah. I used to be a member of Savannah before it was in Rachel, but we are a Mendoza long, right?
Yes, we, we do.
But it's probably not...
There's no reason to be, yeah.
We are hotels.
Well, if only you and I think of that.
I don't know.
Because that's all.
That, well, hotel.
Well, I think that she probably encouraged sometime to, to lose hotels, if it was...
Did you tell her that she was going?
I think so.
Well, I'm looking at it. We could, we could work on it.
I'm not sharing a Queensite, tell you.
I don't take up much space.
You could charge.
Well, there you go.
You can make some money on these deal fairies.
Well, I talked to the Iowa State football place, and Steve, he can fill it down. They wish that on me.
Enough of this frivolity. We'll, we'll adjourn to the October thirteenth study.